At this time, I would like to call to order this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. This meeting is being conducted virtually. It is being currently broadcast on cable Verizon Channel 30 and Comcast Channel 22. It's being livestreamed through our website at www.middletownbucks.org and livestream on our YouTube channel at Middletown Bucks. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to comment live during the meeting after each agenda item and also during other business, the public comment section. At this time, would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Tosti, will you please call roll?
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Strauss.
Here.
Mr. Kiesak.
Here.
Ms. Korpel.
Here.
And we have our township solicitor, our township engineer, our township manager, department heads, and some distinguished guests.
Thank you. A couple of announcements and special items. First, the next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Tuesday, September 8th at 7:00 PM. And next, we have two retirement recognitions tonight. And these are two people who have served the township for a very long time, and we are honored to recognize them tonight. They are Nancy Blank and Ruth Spronley. And what I'd like to do, if we could, is let people who have worked with them just give a chance to talk a little bit about them and their service to the township. First, Ms. Teoli Cools, would you talk about Ruth?
Sure. Thank you so much. It's really my honor to say a few words about Ruth. I am very fortunate that I was able to work with Ruth from the time I started in Middletown eight years ago. It was very obvious that Ruth was someone who had just a strong customer focus and really was sort of the backbone of the building and zoning department. Ruth has more than 21 years of experience, and so we lose a ton of institutional knowledge with her retirement, but we wish her well. Again, she really always went above and beyond when it came to dealing with the issues in building and zoning. Someone who was always willing to go the extra mile to get someone's answer internally. For those of us who worked with her, she was our internal party planner. So Ruth was always the person who planned the holiday get-togethers or the township picnics. And her husband Jeff, who is a retired police detective, the two of them really helped to make the team always have a great time when we were doing our, when we're doing our internal get-togethers. But Ruth, we wish her the best, and she truly enjoys, deserves retirement, and we are really happy to congratulate her for more than 21 years of service to the township.
Thank you, Ms. Teoli Cools. And again, thank you, Ruth, and we certainly wish you all the best. Chief Barterilla, would you speak a little bit about Nancy, please?
Thank you, Mr. Kiesak, and good evening, fellow board members. So I don't know what more we can say about Nancy. I know a year and a half ago, we celebrated her 50th year with the Middletown Township Police Department with the township. She made it another year and four months before she finally decided to retire. We managed, two weeks ago today, to have a socially-distanced, mask-wearing, limited-capacity retirement celebration for her in the building. We were very blessed to have some retired officers who worked with her, attend that, and say a few words. And I think that was very appropriate, very touching. We could at least do that in the era that we're in right now. But as far as Nancy goes, like as Ms. Teoli Cools said, the institutional knowledge is irreplaceable. You're talking about 51 years. But even more than that, the dedication, I said it two weeks ago, and I'll say it today, I've worked with Nancy for six years, and I'm very blessed to have had that opportunity. Nancy, I believe, I know in the six years I've been there, she worked as hard from the day I got here till her final day, the last Friday. And I'm sure that Nancy worked just as hard 51 years ago as she did the Friday that she left, August 14th. And it's impossible to replace that. It's a huge loss. And I always say, if there's such thing as a ring of honor, like they have for sports teams in the Middletown Township Police Department Ring of Honor, you might have Chief Howard, Chief McKenna, Chris Jones. Nancy definitely belongs there. She's a big chunk of our history, a very valuable piece of our history. I'm very blessed to have worked with her. And to me, for all the township residents who are out there listening, it's one, she's one of the most dedicated employees that I've ever had the pleasure of working around. So, and I also do want to congratulate Ruth Spronley, because I know we work in conjunction with planning and zoning quite a bit. And Ruth was always very helpful to us when we had a police issue in LNI. And I want to thank, also thank Ruth for lending us her husband Jeff for 35 years with the PD as well. And Jeff was here two weeks ago to congratulate Nancy as well. So congratulations, Nancy, and I wish you the best, and I'm sure we'll be talking. Thank you, Mr. Kiesak.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Nancy, and we certainly wish you all the best as well. I think we have a few other distinguished guests who would like to say a few words. Is, let's see, is State Representative Tina Davis here?
Yes.
Representative Davis, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I read in the paper about Nancy, and I was at her event last year, over a year ago, when she, when she got her 50th. And the one thing that struck me the most about her was not the tenure that you were in there, Nancy, but everyone that I talked to about you said that whether you greeted people with a smile or a kind word or just was always there, not only doing your job, but doing it with poise and, and deep, what's the word, with poise and grace. And I want to congratulate you, and I'm honored to be here tonight, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Representative Davis. Is State Representative Frank Ferry here?
I am. Thank you, Chairman. We have some kids cheering in the background, so they're honoring both Ruth and Nancy's retirement. I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words this evening. I believe Tina has citations for both of the retirees. You know, I had the honor of working in Middletown prior to this career with both ladies, and I believe both the township manager and the chief of police comments were dead on in terms of the value that they added to the organization, both institutionally and as Representative Davis just touched on, their personalities, because they were always welcoming. They were always very great to the residents and their coworkers. So it is a huge loss to Middletown, but I wish both of them much success and much enjoyment in their retirement.
Thank you, Representative Ferry. Thank you to both our state representatives for being here tonight. I believe we also have our Congressman Brian Fitzpatrick. Congressman Fitzpatrick, are you here?
I am. Thank you, Chairman, for yielding, and greetings to everybody, to Nancy and to Ruth. I just wanted to come on tonight, more so as a resident, lifelong resident in Middletown Township. The township that I was born in, was raised in, that I currently live in, where my office currently is, to thank you for all your years of service to us as a resident. And I had the opportunity to join Nancy in her last week. I think it might have been her last day, but it was certainly her last week. Just to thank her for 51 years of service, when Stephanie had mentioned that Nancy was taking advantage of early retirement, I said, if 51 years is early retirement, we all got problems. But it's, it's an amazing feat, Nancy, that you were able to serve our community for that long, really. It's, it's just remarkable. And you literally started before I was born in Middletown Township. And we talked a little bit about all the changes that have occurred in our township over 51 years. From the lower end of the days of growing up at the LPRA pools and the O'Boyle's ice cream trucks, to all the development that occurred in the north end of our township is just amazing. So thank you so much, Nancy, for all your service to the police department. And to Ruth, you know, when my mom was pregnant with me, my dad was a candidate for Middletown Township Supervisor. He lost, but then he ended up serving on the Middletown Zoning Board and had tremendous stories and tremendous memories of that time. And I know how important that service is for all the work that you've done for Middletown Township and serving us. So to both of you, Nancy and Ruth, really more as a resident of Middletown Township, I just wanted to offer my heartfelt thanks for all the service you do. You did it oftentimes behind closed doors and outside of the limelight, but you served honorably and nobly, and for that, we are very, very eternally grateful to both of you. We appreciate both of you very much, and we know that it's going to be nothing but positive experiences ahead when you get to actually enjoy some time, enjoying the little things in life. So God bless all of you. And I will say also, we, for Nancy and Ruth, we had flags flown over the Capitol for both of them. And we also had both of their names entered into the congressional record. And Nancy and Ruth, once we get through COVID, which we will, I invite both of you to join me down in Washington, DC, and I can show you exactly where you can find your name. So thank you to both of you guys, and thanks to the board for yielding some time for me. I appreciate it.
That's great. Thank you, Congressman, and thank you for being here tonight. And just one more time, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and all the township staff and employees, thank you to Ruth and Nancy, and we wish you nothing but the best. Moving on, next on the agenda are the consent agenda items. They are Item A, consideration of authorizing payment of August 24th, 2020 bill list in the amount of $1,478,783.30. Item B, consideration of approving the July 20th, 2020 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. And Item C, consideration of approving the final payment release for the Lincoln Plaza land development in the amount of $64,443.82. Mr. Tosti.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda items as read.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. Is there a second? Yes, Ms. Korpel.
I second.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider approval of the Middletown Township Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Kessler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kiesak. We presented the comprehensive plan at last meeting that we had with the board. And with that presentation, the board approved the advertisement for tonight's hearing. Over the past two years, it's been a work, really a collaborative effort of our team, Remington and Vernick, along with traffic planning and design. But more importantly, really, the steering committee that was made up of really a cross-section of the township, the township staff, and the public outreach events that we had with residents to put together this implementable comprehensive plan. So we're proud of the document that's before the board tonight for adoption. And we look forward to having this as really a valuable tool for the township over the next, you know, five, 10 years to steer where the township wants to be and how to, how to get there along the way. So with that, I'll mention that the Planning Commission at their July 1st meeting recommended the comprehensive plan. And again, last, last meeting, it was before the board as a presentation, so I won't go too, too far over it again. But the acknowledgements of all the folks that are included with the document, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. If there are any questions for Mr. Kessler from the board, please feel free. Otherwise, I certainly can entertain at this time a motion to adopt the Middletown Township Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Strauss.
In adopting the plan, I just wanted to acknowledge the comments that we received from the Langhorn Borough Planning Commission, which I thought were really thoughtful and helpful. And anytime we have the opportunity to cooperate with our boroughs, I hope that we do so. And I didn't see anything, as I read through those comments, that was contradictory or negative towards our plan. What I saw was a lot of support and a lot of request for making sure that as we go forward, we consider working together with Langhorn Borough. And I hope that the other boroughs and our surrounding municipalities have the chance to review it in as much detail as Langhorn did, because that was really exciting for me to see. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Strauss. And I'll mention that I agree, I thought it was a very positive, kind of working together, you know, feedback that we got from the borough. And one of the things that's done within 30 days And one of the things that's done within thirty days of having a comprehensive plan adopted would be that it's sent to the county, to Bucks County, uh, for their record. And also as a township, we can make sure that our neighboring municipalities or anybody that we would like to, uh, make sure has a copy of it, uh, is sent one as well, uh, in the effort and the plan to work together to, uh, to tackle some of the challenges that we'll face, you know, as, as a team.
Yeah, I think that would be really smart, especially for, um, the boroughs that are within our municipality because so many of our traffic issues and our pedestrian and walkability issues involve people trying to get to and from those, uh, commercial areas. So I think that's great. Uh, so with that, I will make a motion to adopt the Middletown Township Comprehensive Plan dated August twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
But next on the agenda is, uh, consideration of enacting resolution number twenty dash eighteen R in support of the United States Postal Service, and I will read the resolution. The resolution of the Township of Middletown County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in support of the United States Postal Service. Whereas the United States Postal Service is mandated by Article One, Section Eight of the Constitution of the United States of America, and whereas many thousands of large businesses and more than thirty million small businesses in the United States rely on the United States Postal Service for communication with friends and relatives and for the delivery of news and products among others, among other things. And whereas citizens and residents of the United States, including those of Middletown Township, similarly rely on the United States Postal Service for communications with friends and relatives and for the delivery of news and products, among other things. And whereas the United States Postal Service is one of the largest employers in the country with about five hundred thousand employees, who, if the United States Postal Service were forced to be out of business, would drastically increase the unemployment rolls and burden already overstressed state unemployment systems. And whereas the Township of Middletown relies on the United States Postal Service for delivering the news of the township, tax bills and other official business to its residents and for receipt of tax payments, as well as absentee and mail-in ballots, which are especially important during this pandemic. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township of Middletown Board of Supervisors does hereby urge the United States Congress and the President of the United States to adequately fund the United States Postal Service so that it can freely and efficiently carry out its mandated constitutional duties. And be it further resolved that we call upon these elected officials in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as well as the President of the United States, who represent the citizens of the Township of Middletown, to publicly announce their support of the continuation and adequate funding of the United States Postal Service resolved this twenty-fourth day of August, two thousand and twenty. I think we need a motion on this. Is that correct, uh, Ms. Tealy Coles or Mr. Esposito? Somebody help me out. Need a motion? So is there a motion, um, to adopt the resolution as just read? Yes, Mr. Tosti.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to, in support of the United States Postal Service.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Corporal.
I'll second and make a motion to protect the United States Postal Service.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions?
Um, Mr. Kezak, I, I'd like to just make a comment if I could.
Certainly.
We see everything going on right now with the Postal Service, with the mail-in ballots and with everything going on. I would just like to say that the Postal Service is really self-funded. There, they don't rely on government funding for this. The problem that they're running into is back in two thousand and six, there was a mandate put on the Postal Service that they have to, uh, pay their health insurance for retirees seventy-five years in advance. There isn't another business, there isn't another company, there's nothing in the United States that is mandated to pay health insurance for retirees seventy-five years in advance. With that, I mean, there's people that are not even alive right now and they have to pay for their health insurance. They need to change that and then they would then be self-sufficient and they wouldn't have to do that. But the Postal Service is in trouble because of that mandate. And that's something that should be followed up on, not by this board, but by other people, to make sure that that mandate goes away because nobody in this country is mandated to do what they have to do. And the funding that they're lacking is because of that funding there that they have to pay seventy-five years in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. Are there any other board comments or board questions? And I see we, uh, have no public questions or comments on this item. Um, therefore, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass is five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda are, uh, two, uh, previously duly advertised ordinances. The first item A is enactment of ordinance number twenty dash zero four, amending the police pension plan. And item B is enactment of ordinance number twenty dash zero five, establishing, quote, "no stopping, standing or parking zone" on Cabot Boulevard, Boulevard. Uh, Ms. Tealy Coles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first ordinance is related to the police pension fund and it is merely a housekeeping update to incorporate several changes that were made to the police pension plan as part of our collective bargaining agreement. And on the Cabot Boulevard, no stopping, standing or parking, that was previously just no parking. And we are adding no stopping, standing to that, um, restriction so that we can, uh, assure that it's, um, easy for folks to travel in the area of the Amazon Fulfillment Center. So both have been advertised and are ready for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Tealy Coles. Um, at this point, uh, unless there are any board questions, I will take a motion to, we can do it as one motion to adopt both of the two ordinances. Ms. Strauss.
I move to approve, uh, ordinance twenty dash oh four, amending the police pension plan, plan and ordinance, uh, twenty dash oh five, establishing a no-stopping, standing or parking zone on Cabot Boulevard.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Tosti.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Both ordinances pass five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, um, are, uh, two Department of Public Works purchases. The first is consideration of purchasing one two thousand and nineteen CAT four forty backhoe loader from Foley Inc. in Piscataway, New Jersey at a cost of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Item B, consideration of purchasing one Laser Z S series mower from Star Lawn Mower Inc. in Jamison, Pennsylvania, for a total of thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. And we have Mr. Gartenmeyer.
Good morning, more, good evening, board members. Um, tonight in front of you is, is consideration for you to purchase the equipment, uh, which you just read. Um, it was in the budget, uh, this year. And then we went back and, um, went through the budget again. The, um, backhoe will be coming out of the road machinery fund and the zero turn would come out of the general, um, fund. Um, they are the two things that I'm asking for tonight. The backhoe is a twenty-four, twenty-four-year-old backhoe that we get replaced. And the zero turn is approximately an oh-six. Um, that is, that's really needed, um, to get replaced.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Gartenmeyer. And I'll just note that certainly this year, um, in light of ongoing circumstances, the board has made an effort to, um, decrease capital expenditures and all of the department, um, directors, including Mr. Gartenmeyer, have done a fantastic job in working with us. These are two items, as I understand it, that are, um, sorely needed in his department, um, which is why they're here, um, before us tonight. So, um, if any, uh, board members have questions, um, about either of these, or I can certainly accept a motion to authorize the purchases. Mr. Tosti.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of a CAT four forty backhoe loader from Foley Incorporated, uh, Pisc, uh, New Jersey at a cost of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And also the, uh, zero tone mower, uh, from Jamison, PA for a thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries five zero. Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing installation of a new asphalt shingled roof, a new dormer and new fascia boarding gutters on the house at Spring Valley Farm to Precision Homes and Building Group LLC of Levittown in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Mr. Copero.
Good evening. I'm going to share my screen real quick. A picture is worth a thousand words and the, um, the. If I do this and then, oh. Okay. Okay. So this is about the Spring Valley Farm property that we bought that is adjacent to, um, the Pendel Wildcat Field. And this is purchased in two thousand and thirteen. This is a circa nineteen sixty, uh, picture of the, uh, house and the property. Uh, as you can see, so the cedar shake roof basically has a lifespan of about up to twenty years. I think we're on twenty-five or twenty-six. We're not quite sure. As you can see, everything in the back is deteriorating. This is the back dormer that's also going to be replaced. At the roof ends, the, um, box end came off one day and then you could see the gutter and the fascia board just fell, uh, fell off the last, within the last ten days. So it is starting to come apart, uh, with the close-up of the cedar shakes. You could see that with their age, the nail holes are starting to split and then the cedar shakes are starting to fall out. So now there are about four or five locations where water is actually coming in, so we don't have enough bags to do it. Uh, I love this photo. This is the underneath. So this house was built in sixteen ninety. You could see the mortise and tenon construction, um, with the dowel in between. It's just beautiful. Uh, I could tell you that I went up there with one contractor, there was over five hundred pounds of beef and that floor did not shake, uh, at all. So as you see the cedar shakes there, what we're going to do is replace them with, uh, asphalt, uh, what they call architectural or three D, uh, shingle shakes to match what is currently on the, on the, uh, side pieces that were replaced in two thousand and fourteen. And if you could see that whole line of gutter just collapsed, uh, about ten days ago. This is the front picture of the house. Again, um, I didn't take a great shot, but there are a couple of, uh, shingles that are actually missing from that front part. So this is just for all the sing, shingled shakes and a replacement of the dormer and they will replace that. Precision Homes and Building Group was the lowest bidder. Um, I was happy they came in there. They have a great local reputation, uh, for its work and they have replaced several cedar shake roofs within various farmhouses in Bucks County. So they are familiar with this type of work and the roof that's involved. For that reason, I would like to, uh, have a motion to replace this roof since we do have a tenant in there. It is, uh, timing is critical that we get this done, um, hopefully in the fall as soon as possible, really before, definitely before the winter.
Thank you, Mr. Copera. Um, if you could unshare your screen.
Okay.
There you go. Thank you. Um, any questions for Mr. Copera from any of the board members? Seeing none, um, I will actually make a motion to authorize the contract for the removal of the old roof and installation of a new asphalt roof gutters and dormer at the house at Spring Valley Farm to Precision Homes and Building LLC of Levittown, the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Is there a second? Mr. Tosti.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Any questions from the public?
There is one public question.
Okay, and I see we have a question. Um, let's see, are we able to allow that person into the room?
They should be in now.
Okay, can you, um, please state your full name and address?
Hello?
Hello? Yes, is this, uh, Alamondo?
Yes, yes.
How are you? You have a, a question or a comment regarding this agenda item?
Yeah, um, I don't know how long, I don't know.
Before you begin, I'm sorry, sir, before you begin, um, and feel free, you can turn your camera on if you wish to or you don't have to. But if you could just please state your full name and address before you begin.
Yeah, it was on. I'm trying, uh, I was disconnected and so now I'm trying to see. Bear with me.
Sure.
There it is. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um, I, I don't know how long it's been since Middletown has been in the business of owning real estate and renting property, that we now have a responsibility to fix the roof for a tenant. I don't think I remember this ever going on in the past, ever since I lived in Middletown since nineteen ninety-one.
I will be, uh, I'm sorry, your first name is Alamondo?
Alamondo.
Alamondo. Um, so this is actually the third house. So Middletown Township, we're not fans of this either. When we acquire large tracts of property, usually it comes along with some old farmhouses. So we have a couple of buildings at the Stires property, Stires Farm property. Excuse me. We have a couple of buildings over at the Langhorn Springs. So when we acquired that hundred acres, it came with some buildings that were dated nineteen eighty. And when we acquired, uh, this ten and a half acres, this came with a house and a, and a farmhouse that was built circa, uh, sixteen ninety and seventeen hundred respectively. So, um, while we don't actively go out and do it, um, we all, it sometimes come with the property, uh, to, you don't want to level these kind of historical properties. And what we do for a cost management standpoint is, um, we get a tenant in there that pays rent, that takes care of the grounds and that just helps us preserve, preserve the buildings.
It seems to me like you're creating, uh, a number of liabilities for the township. Today is the roof and, and the shingles and stuff like that, but tomorrow is going to be windows and some other issues. I live in a house that is, uh, twenty, twenty-one years old and I know how expensive and extensive that could be to maintain that property. Where does it end?
We understand. I mean, you, you just have to be prudent with what you do. I mean, none of these are exotic, exquisite. There's no quartz countertops or anything else like that. It's basically, when you look at this, this, especially this property, um, was part of the William Penn track that came over and, and, um, when he came over in the sixteen eighties. So, um, they built, they built this house, so it's got some historical, um, features to it. And you could see how the settlers built houses back in, you know, at the turn of the seventeenth century.
Okay, I can see it being something like a museum or for sightseeing. I just don't see, uh, it becoming a rental property.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate, um, your comment. Um, thank you for being here tonight. Are there any other, uh, resident comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, um, there has been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pass is five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing the purchase of twenty-five hundred square feet of sport coat modular flooring for the kickwall project at Middletown Community Park from Martorano Recreation Company in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, Mr. Copera again.
Good evening. Uh, this is part of the, uh, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources grant. This is part of the overall five hundred thousand dollar project. The kickwall project went out to bid a couple of times. The, our Department of Public Works is taking over and doing the earthwork. These are just purchasing some of the parts that go with it. The sport court, um, is going to be what the balls hit and it's basically a, uh, nice tractable flooring that will last for fifteen years. It gives you the right level of grip and, uh, lack of abrasiveness. So if we put asphalt there, if a child slipped, he would, you know, rough up his knees or ass, uh, elbows pretty bad. So it gives you that kind of nice mix. It's a snap in place. Our Department of Public Works will be installing this. And this, um, this is the, um, the official tile for the indoor soccer league, so that's why we picked this.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Copera? If not, I will accept a motion. Ms. Strauss.
Uh, and I also just wanted to say, I'm glad we are going ahead, uh, with this part of the project just because the, uh, grant funding is there. I know a kickwall may sound, uh, frivolous in this, uh, in this time, but this is something that we started, uh, years ago and have been working towards. And I think it's important to keep charging ahead and making sure that we achieve the matching portion of the grant, uh, on the, on the pe, different pieces of the project. And so the budget does include, I see in the memo, the budget does include funding and, uh, with the matching grant money for this project. So with that, I will move to authorize the purchase of sport court modular flooring from Mart Toronto Recreation Company in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti, there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public?
There is one coming in now.
Okay. And if you could just state your name and address before you make your comment. How are we doing, are they in, Chad?
We see you.
Yes, Mr. Kers, well, you can speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was someone else asking a question. For years, I've been trying to get a crosswalk that goes from Middletown Township to that community park, does the grant funding provide for that?
So, different grants, so this is, there is a, the grant that built the one mile trail along Langhorn Yardley Road, that was a different grant, and there will be a pedestrian crosswalk installed at the entrance of Middletown Community Park. Basically, sometime this fall before Thanksgiving is the estimated date.
Is that from Laurel Oaks or the new development to the left of Laurel Oaks?
From the new development, so there's a two-piece, the rest of the sidewalk from Laurel Oaks through the back of the new development is going to be connected to this cross path.
And Alamondo, the only thing that's holding it up right now is the Penn dot permit, so it's pretty exciting, your neighborhood will finally be able to be connected to this crosswalk, and there are going to be flashing pedestrian beacons, and it should be a huge improvement, and I know something you've been waiting for, for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, there's been a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries 5-0, thank you, Mr. Copera.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing advertisement of a bid for the replacement of Forsythia Snowball Pedestrian Footbridge. Is this Mr. Garden Mayor again? Oh no, this is Pat, Mr. Ennis.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Kezak, good evening, members of the board, allow me to share my screen. So this is the footbridge that connects Snowball Gate to Forsythia Gate, you can see, we've had a structural failure, we've had to barricade this bridge from public use, we want to replace this with a new bridge, that would be something, section, you know, similar to this one, which would be a six foot wide bridge spanning the same distance, we're asking to authorize the bidding of, and fabrication and delivery of this bridge, which will be placed by the Township Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis, are there any board questions or comments for Mr. Ennis regarding this proposal?
I have a question, I believe I actually already know the answer, but I just wanted to double check, the new bridge would actually be wider than the current bridge, is that correct?
That is correct, it'll be six foot wide, which we find is a good width for pedestrian use, we're also going to have handrails that are up to standard for ADA accessibility, and we are looking at getting accessible paths from each drive, from Snowball Drive would have a ramp, and then on Forsythia Drive also, so it'd be from one drive to the other, we would have a full accessible bridge.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Tosti.
Hey, Mr. Anderson, how soon do you think it will be before we put it out the bid? And do you know how long it will be before it'll be done?
We can, I would say be out to bid within the next two months, we have to do a little permitting on our part from Conservation District, I would think early spring would be realistic with placing it, just because of the time of year right now, and it's about a, I believe a three monthly time for the bridge to come in.
So it'll be prefab, then they'll just sit it in there, is that?
Correct, that's what we're looking for, a fabricated bridge, it's only a 60 foot span, so it could be assembled and shipped.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Ennis? Ms. Corporal.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the authorization of the bid for the Forsythia Snowball Pedestrian Footbridge.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne, there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions at this time? Are there any questions from the public? I am not seeing any, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries 5-0, thank you, Ms. Ennis. Next on the agenda, discussion of adopting the 2015 Property Maintenance Code.
Okay, so this is really a housekeeping item, so we, this ordinance is looking to replace the 2003 International Property Maintenance Code with the updated 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, the official code, maintenance code for the township. The International Property Maintenance Code is a model ordinance that sets forth the minimum maintenance standards for properties and buildings within the township, and the IPMC is usually updated every few years, and the township hasn't adopted the newer versions in quite some time, so we just feel it's time to do that. The Property Maintenance Code is enforced by the township, by the code enforcement officer within the township, so what we're looking for tonight is really authorize, authorization to advertise your ordinance.
Got a big connection.
Anybody have any questions for me about the Property Maintenance Code? Anything else?
You got a, you got a little bit of a back connection, Jim, I think we got most of it though, are there any questions for Mr. Esposito?
I just have one question, is this the latest?
Can you guys hear me?
Sort of.
I'm sorry, I can't, is this the latest property maintenance code there is in 2015?
It is, it is the latest one, yes, we would, yeah, we would. It is the, it is the latest one, yes.
Mr. Ennis, you had your hand up, did you want to add something or just fill in some of the gaps?
I was just going to try, yes, it is the latest code, I was just gonna put in my comment.
Thank you, thank you, are there any other board questions? I'll make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the proposed ordinance to replace the 2003 International Property Maintenance Code with the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code as the official property maintenance code of Middletown Township, there's a second. Thank you, Ms. Corporal, there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Carries 5-0, yes, Ms. Tealicoles.
You might consider Mr. Chairman skipping over this next item, and that way Mr. Esposito can correct his audio problem with our IT folks, there's a lot of talking by Jim in the next item.
That's a great suggestion, so we'll do that, Mr. Esposito, do what you need, and then you and/or Chad let us know when you're back up and running. So we will skip the next item, and we will move on to Agenda Item 13, which concerns the Planning Commission vacancy, item A is consideration of accepting the resignation of John Pond from the Planning Commission, and item B is consideration of appointing Keith Oarswald to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2023. Is there a board member who would like to make a motion on these two items? Yes, Mr. Tosti.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of John Pond from the Planning Commission and to appoint Keith Oarswald to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Payne will second, there's a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0, thank you, Mr. Pond, for your service, and thank you for, to Mr. Oarswald for your willingness to serve, we look forward to having you on commission. Next, doesn't look like Mr. Esposito's ready yet, so we'll keep moving on. Item 14 is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System MS4 Annual Presentation by Township Engineer Isaac Kessler, Mr. Kessler.
Thank you, Mr. Kuechek, and I'll, I'll share my screen for the presentation this evening. And each year, we are tasked with presenting an item that's as relatable as possible to the public as far as our MS4 system is concerned, and this year, as with everything else, it's affected by everything that's going on with the pandemic, so tonight's topic will be just that with our MS4 system, kind of how it affects it, and almost a public service presentation, just to have folks keep in mind some things that affect kind of the more global impacts that some of the items we have now are, are having an effect on those systems. So just as a annual reminder, our MS4 is municipal separate storm sewer system, our township, as many other municipalities, have separate systems for where the sanitary goes, which eventually gets to the treatment plant, and then our storm drains lead to our waterways, our streams, creeks, and eventually to, two main areas in our township, the Nishamity Creek watershed, or the Delaware River watershed. So pictured here are the, the different waters in our township, as you can see the colors, the blue, red, a little sliver along the north end there, that is the Nishamity Creek watershed, which is a, a high quality system that flows through with the lower Bucks area. The other colors shown are some smaller watersheds, they all flow towards the Delaware River, both are protected, and we have ordinances that protect what kind of development and construction is done to help the main goals of the MS4 program, which is to continue to improve the township's waterways, the quality of them, reduce the pollutant loads, and really manage stormwater and drainage infrastructure. So how's the pandemic affect our MS4 system, really, as a community, we're working to stay safe during the pandemic, and it's introduced a lot of items that are discarded, and a lot of discarded items end up in our systems, whether they're, you know, placed and washed down the drain during a storm event, or if they're thrown into the sanitary where they wind up at the treatment plant, and then have an impact there, so protective equipment, sanitation, chemicals and those kind of products, single-use plastic items, we see a lot of increase in these during these times, and we wanted to just have folks aware of where these things are winding up, in an effort to keep our environment and just our overall system as clean as possible. The proper disposal gloves and masks, those are things that aren't really recyclable, they, they should be put in the trash and sent out, you know, on trash day to be picked up. The picture here, it's something that we see kind of too often, they wind up being discarded maybe on the ground, wind up getting during a rain event, basically washed into the gutters, which winds up into the streams and our waterways, single-use plastics should be recyclable for the most part, that's something you can check with the product, but as an effort to also make sure they don't wind up in our streams and waterways, trying to recycle those the best we can, and just being mindful of, of what is going down the drain, not only on an environmental front, but really, if these systems are functioning as intended, and to the best of our effort, then when it comes to extreme events, like we had the other week with like a tropical storm kind of level of a storm, you see an overflow of these systems, you don't wind up with all this trash and, and debris and everything you don't want floating around, that, that comes to be more of a health hazard than an environmental concern. And also, the items that wind up going to the treatment plants, they have a capacity of how much they can treat before they have to overflow to areas that they don't want to, if they see too much of an increase, so they plan for a certain amount, obviously they, they plan for peak times as well, and they try their best not to be surprised by a large increase in, in some of these items. A photo here is, is during the, the big storms recently in Bucks County, if the streams and the waterways are overflowing, you'll have that brown water, which is a lot of sediment and that kind of thing, and with that is anything that's kind of in its way, right, any kind of oils from the road, trash and debris that might be in the gutters, and all that is wound up just being pushed around the watershed, so it's in our best interest to keep it as, as clean as possible, and after these large storm events, really a community effort for all of us to try to do our part to, to keep it as, as high quality as we can in our area. With that, here's a picture in the Nishamity Creek in a, in a nice calm day, and as I mentioned, this, this year really was just focusing on those increased single-use items, the, those gloves, those masks, just trying to make sure they wind up disposed in the proper way to, to help it keep our community clean, and so we get through the pandemic and, and can focus on some better things, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody would have tonight, and I thank you for the, the time for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler, we appreciate the presentation, do any board members have questions for Mr. Kessler? And I don't see any questions from the public. So again, thank you, Mr. Castle, for the presentation, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like Mr. Esposito is back and ready to roll, so we will go back to the discussion of amendments to the zoning ordinance and the stormwater management ordinance, Mr. Esposito.
Good, can you, can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
I apologize for, for that, all right, so this is a continuation of a discussion we actually started last year regarding revising some of the zoning sections relating to Levittown. What we've noticed over the past few years is that the Township Zoning Hearing Board has received an influx of variance applications from mainly the R2 section in the zoning district in Levittown, and it appears that the percentages of allowable building coverage area and the maximum impervious surface ratio are insufficient in that area. And it's kind of annoying for both the residents and the township, the residents have to pay an application fee to get these variances, the township has to pay, you know, for advertising costs, and this application fee is actually not enough to cover the variance, you know, to cover the advertising fees, and it seems like almost always the zoning hearing board is granting these variance applications, the variance requests are usually to add relatively minor additions, sheds, porches, other accessory structures, so what we decided to do, I sat down with, with Mr. Ennis and Ms. Tealicoles, and we decided to change some of the provisions in the R2, or actually, we tried, decided to change the R2 district in the Levittown section, which is mainly south of Lincoln Highway and east of Dorm Road, so I believe it's the Highland Park section, the Twin Oaks section, the Cobalt Ridge section, and the Quincy Hollow section, so we're going to create a new zoning district for those areas, and change the impervious surface ratio and the building coverage ratio, as well as the minimum side yard setback, and we're going to increase those to, from 20% to 30% for the building coverage area, and from 30% to 40% for the impervious surface ratio area. We, looking at the past few zoning hearing board applications, it would probably eliminate probably 50 to 75% of the applications in, in those, and the, what we're increasing these two are similar to what Falls and Bristol Township has in their smaller Levittown zoning areas. Another thing that Mr. Ennis and I had discussed that is a, there are a lot of variance applications for, our fences for corner lots, and those are pretty much always granted as well, so we're going to. And those are pretty much always granted as well. So we're going to change the zoning ordinance to allow the fences in the secondary side of a, of a corner lot, provided there is a, a minimum setback of eight feet from the, from the right of way. And then there's also some stormwater area changes that Mr. Ennis will actually discuss with you.
Yes, thanks, Jim. So two things in our stormwater ordinance, chapter four thirty and four thirty-one, which is the Nishamity Creek watershed are really not in sync with the stormwater BMP manual for use of the rational method. And we want to limit the areas that you are allowed to use. Right now, they, they let it up to two hundred acres. And for the larger hundred year, twenty-five year storms, it's not a good method to estimate volumes and peak flow rates. So we like to bring the ordinance in more into compliance with the stormwater BMP for those two chapters.
And so what we're actually asking for tonight is for the board to authorize us to draft the ordinance and send it out because it's a zoning ordinance change, we actually need to send it to the Bucks County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission. We also need to get the county involved to help us redraw the zoning map since we're changing a section of the zoning map, which is not a hard thing with they have the GPS maps now with GIS maps, but we still need to get done. So it will take a little bit of time, longer than normal ordinance would. And because it's changing the zoning map, we actually do need to send notice out to every single resident that lives in the section of Levittown's that we're changing. So they will not have the opportunity to know that we're changing, changing the ordinance.
Well, I mean, I'll certainly, I'm happy to make a motion to authorize you to move forward with that process. I, I mean, I personally think this is an excellent and long overdue change, particularly the zoning issue. Because as you said, it represents a significant portion of the items that the zoning hearing board has to deal with, and they are invariably granted. And it's, it's a burden for residents who want to do things like build a fence, put up a shed, things along those lines. So I'm, I'm happy to make a motion. I'm not sure exactly how you want me to couch that motion, Mr. Esposito. But we'll make a motion to authorize you to move forward with developing.
Drafting the zoning ordinance as, as proposed.
Drafting the zoning ordinance as proposed. I, I'll accept a second to the motion or if there are any questions for Mr. Esposito or Mr. Ennis on these items. Mr. Tosti.
I'll make a second, but I also have a question. And, and I was wondering, you, you had mentioned certain sections in Levittown. And I'm wondering why the gates were left out, the two deep tails were left out. Lower orchard, upper, and why is it just the ones?
So when we, when myself and Mr. Ennis were looking at all of the applications, pretty much all of them were from these sections because the other sections that you're mentioning are in the R one zoning district. There are a couple of different provisions in there and those properties are actually larger than, than the sections that I mentioned to you. So the segment, sections that I mentioned to you have roughly are mainly seven thousand square feet property lots. The other sections that you're mentioning, I believe, Mr. Ennis, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, are somewhere around ten thousand to twelve thousand. So there's a lot less applications in, in those sections and they don't need them as much because they can put a little bit more, you know, impervious surface areas on their lots because they're bigger.
Yeah, the two sections are Snowball and Forsythia, they're, they're the R one districts. They wouldn't change. But Deepdale, East and West are R two, which would change. Upper Orchard is another section that's R two that would change. So it's most of the, the sections that have the smaller lot areas, the seven thousand.
So, so the gates would not change, but the other sections, I mean, because I didn't hear them and as long as I, I just, as long as they're all incorporated, I'm fine with it. But the gates, because of the size of their lots, they're bigger. But the other ones that like the orchards and the deep deli, they would all be incorporated in that.
Yes, they would. Yeah. Cobalt Ridge is another section which would be incorporated.
Yeah, he mentioned Cobalt.
Okay.
That now, one more question if I could. Will we be coming back to do the gates later on? Like, or is that something that?
No, that's, it is, we don't have an intention to do that. When we were looking at, at them, it, it didn't seem necessary because of the size of the lots and the, and the amount of requests that we've gotten there, it didn't seem necessary to do that.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Strauss, I believe you had a question.
Yeah, I have one question on each item. Still broadly supportive of going forward with this, but just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Probably the simpler one first, Mr. Ennis, on the stormwater issue. I heard the words that you said, but if you can distill it down for me a little bit, are we making it harder? Let's see, are we, we're trying to manage stormwater better, I assume. And so this will be a little more challenging for developers as opposed to less challenging if someone wanted to build a, a new development. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. We're going to, you know, the rational method is an older method which underestimates volumes and peaks, especially as you build the storm bigger. So we're going to look to limit that to smaller developments somewhere in the five acre range or less. Anything bigger should, should have a NRCS, which is National Resource Conservation Method, which is a, a better method of approximating volumes and peak runoff rates.
Okay, great. That's helpful. So basically more developments will be required to go through this more stringent stormwater process as opposed to the less stringent rational method process.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. And then my question on the zoning change, it sounds like it's necessary and anything to make things easier for the residents. So they don't have to come deal with a bunch of red tape is great with me. But to that end, and this may be a bigger conversation for, for a different group, so feel free to put me off. We have had a lot of challenges with the lower Bucks joint municipal authority, asking residents throughout Levittown to move sheds, to move fences, to dig up pools. And I have seen the only benefit of having them come through the zoning hearing process as being potentially a place to catch any of those conflicts. Do you see that changing this or do they need to get help in a different way to make sure that they are not running afoul of LBJ, et cetera's right of ways?
Well, everything that I just told you that people are asking for variance for, actually still will need to come into the township to get permits to build the fences and the additions and the porches. So they will actually still, same, will, will be able to figure out those, those things that they're along with the lower Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority. And there's actually still a lot of other ways that the lower Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority is going to be hounding people on those aspects as well.
I have no doubt, but if Mr. Ennis and his staff are going to catch it in the permitting process, then I'm good with the zoning change. That's great.
Yes, we require the lower Bucks approval before we issue ours when we see easements on various lots.
Great.
Thank you. Ms. Corble.
I just, I'm, I agree with what Mr. Charles said a hundred percent. And I, obviously I work in a, you know, in the district for the state rep and we get this all the time. Is there something that can be done about places, people that have been approved years and years ago, twenty, thirty years ago? And they're now told by the joint municipality that they have to move their sheds and their fences? Because we get this all the time and it's, it's thousands of dollars, like a lot of older residents cannot afford. So what, what can we do for them, if anything?
Well, what, um, we do get this question quite often. What I've been telling people lately, there actually is a court case that's going on currently. It went to, to Bucks County Court of Common Pleas that a resident brought against the, the authority who was trying to make them remove trees from their property. The Court of Common Pleas did rule partially in favor of the resident that the, the authority needs to, they need to actually provide the survey saying that those trees or other items are in the easement area. However, if they are proven to be in that area, they will have to pay to remove them. That decision has been appealed though to the Commonwealth Court, so it is not law yet. But I am, we are advising people just to pay attention to, to those court cases and, and hire, you know, and possibly hire counsel, their own counsel to, to look into those situations.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Ennis or Mr. Esposito on these items? Okay, there has been a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's see, where do we leave off? Okay, next we have the first of two land development items. The first item number fifteen is consideration of approving the Barner final minor subdivision and land development plan for three sixty-four Cedar Avenue, Langhorne, Pennsylvania. A TMP number twenty-two dash zero zero nine, that, dash zero two seven, S slash LD number thirteen dash five in the R two zoning district. And we have someone here on behalf of the applicant. I see, see Mr. McGuigan. I see Mr. Dumack. I see Mr. Barner.
Good evening, Mr. Keback, Mike McGuigan, on behalf of the applicant. Anyhow, thank you very much for your time. So I represent Mr. Pintosian, Mr. Barner, the owners of the property located at three sixty-four Cedar Avenue with respect to this request for approval of the minor subdivision and land development plan. By way of background briefly, the property is a residential property presently zoned R two. The plan is to subdivide the presently twenty-three thousand five hundred fifty-four square lot, creating a new lot on which a single family residence will be built. Right now, there is only one single family residence on the property. The, a few years back, my clients got variance relief from the zoning hearing board. The, the application or the, the project was then in inactive status for a few years. It was recently revived. We went to the planning commission in July and again in August, at which time the planning commission recommended approval of the project. So we're here today to request a few different, few different waivers of the Remington and Vernick review letter. I have your copy of Remington and Vernick letter as well as the Fire Marshal Review Letter. It's our position, we're, we're in compliance with Fire Marshal Review Letter. As far as the Remington and Vernick letter goes, the, the majority of the items have been satisfied at this point. The remaining items are, will comply with the exception of six waiver requests. And at this time, if the board likes, I am willing to discuss these items for you. So, so the first, the first item, the request waiver of section four forty dash two zero two, that's to allow the project not to require, not to have front, frontage on an improved street. So by way of a little bit of background, right now the lot fronts Cedar Avenue. What the plan is to do is to have us subdivide the lot and have the new lot, it would front a paper street, which would be Blue Bell Avenue. Blue Bell Avenue right now is an unimproved roadway, about eight feet wide gravel roadway. The new lot will front that roadway. And even though it is technically an unimproved roadway within the township, what our plan is to do is to actually improve the current situation. What we're going to do is increase the width of the roadway to twenty feet and we're going to be fixing the grade as well. Presently, there is only one other home that has access, that has its access through Blue Bell. So we will be coordinating, we're using the roadway together with that other property. So we would request the waiver to, so that we can continue to do that. The next waiver is four forty dash three oh five D three D, which is a partial waiver to not require the applicant to show all existing features within two hundred feet of the tract together with an aerial photograph showing those existing features within two hundred feet. We do have the aerial, but the plan itself does not list every feature within two hundred feet of the property. The application is a small scale application, so it's a minor item, but we would ask to have a waiver of that requirement. For, on a similar basis, we request a waiver from section four forty dash three oh five D three E, which is again to not show all existing buildings and their uses, bodies of water, wetlands, marsh areas, sewers, culverts, utility lines, fire hydrants and other significant manmade features on or immediately adjacent to the track. Again, it's a similar reason to the, to the second waiver that we requested. The fourth waiver would be of section four forty dash four oh five A, which is to permit a utility easement with a minimum width of ten feet as opposed to the required twenty feet. Mr. Dumack would be more able to explain this than I will, but essentially what the plan is, is to run what I believe is more along lines of a spaghetti line along the side of the tract. And we would, we would snake this line through existing vegetation, existing roots. And we would only need about three feet to do so. So that's why we're requesting the ten feet rather than the twenty feet. We've already run this by Bucks County Water and Sewer and they're all right with it. The, the next waiver would be of four forty dash four ten B one, which is to not require the widening of Cedar Avenue or the improvement of Blue Bell. Again, the new tract is not going to be fronting Cedar. It will be fronting the unimproved Blue Bell. While we're making improvements, it will not become an improved street or roadway within the township. So, but again, like I said before, and I don't want to repeat this ad nauseam, we will be actually making improvements to the roadway more than doubling the width as well as regrading it. So the actual traffic condition on that roadway will be improved, not only for this property, but for the other property that gets its access from Blue Bell. And lastly, we request a waiver from four forty dash four seventeen C, which is to not require a ten foot wide landscape easement. I believe there's some utilities in the area that will inhibit, are providing that easement. I, I believe if the board has any questions about this, then Mr. Dumack will be able to add some additional detail. Now, before I pass it back on to you, Mr. Kezak, there is one point that I would like to address. It's not, it's not quite a waiver. This is item twenty-six in the Remington and Vernick review letter, which is where, quote, "The applicant should provide a draft of a driveway easement with deed restrictions between all residents using Blue Bell Avenue." So this was, this is an item that we've attempted to comply with and we, we would like to comply with. However, we have not had luck with the other residents using Blue Bell Avenue. Namely, there's a neighbor, Mr. Edward Adele, who is, his property gets its access through, through Blue Bell. So being as Blue Bell is an unimproved roadway, it's incumbent upon the properties using the roadway to maintain it. So what we've done is we've drafted a, a driveway maintenance agreement. We've drafted this agreement. We've sent it to council for Mr. Adele. They haven't responded with, they haven't approved it. They haven't indicated they'd be willing to sign it. And in fact, we've had email correspondence with their council demonstrating that they have, I believe, phrasing was no real interest in a maintenance agreement regarding Blue Bell Avenue. So we've attempted to comply with this and like I said, moving forward, we'll continue to do so. But we just have that, that natural barrier where we can't force the other property owners to sign something that they don't want to sign.
Thank you, Mr. McGuigan. Mr. Kessler, do you want to comment on any of the waivers or any of the other aspects of this proposal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kuechek. The waivers were discussed at the planning commission meetings that the applicant was before, and I appreciate their counsel going through them tonight as well. We do not have any issue with, with the list of waivers they have requested. As mentioned, it is a smaller property being split to some of those more plan related waivers that they're requesting. We have no issue. I, I would like for them to just clarify for that fifth waiver request for section four forty dash four ten B one, the one that states that they're not required widening of Cedar Avenue and, and Blue Bell Avenue. I, I know originally the request was for the both of those, but with them actually widening Blue Bell Avenue, that paper street. I just wanted to clarify that the waiver requested tonight, I, I would think is just to not require the widening of Cedar Avenue. Is that correct? I'll ask the, the applicant to just clarify that, that one request there.
Um, that, that's generally correct. We're making improvements to Blue Bell Avenue. The issue is, even with our improvements, I still don't believe it's going to be considered an improved roadway within the township. So it's still be incumbent upon the applicant and potential future owner of the property, together with the owner of the neighboring property on Blue Bell, to maintain the roadway. So I believe that. So I believe that the, from what I understand, that the waiver request is for that purpose. However, like I said, we, we, we will be improving the roadway, uh, as specified on the plans and as I discussed tonight.
Thanks for that clarification. Yes, I want to make sure that the, any waivers that may be approved. Doesn't say that, that widening of Blue Bell Avenue that, that is to be done is waived as well. So just to clarify that perhaps, you know, add, add some language to that, that waiver request in, in any kind of approval that would state that those, uh, that, that improvement work of Blue Bell Avenue would be, uh, included as, as a condition of, of any approval per the Fire Marshal's you know, recommendations and requirements. Uh, and Mr. Keycheck, I will mention that, uh, I didn't know it's just in the packet of the, of the letters included for tonight's meeting to the board. Uh, I believe the most recent review letter that was included was the second review letter from June, uh, dated June twelfth. And I will mention that working with the applicant for the Blue Bell Avenue portion. The, there was a supplemental, uh, review letter issued, uh, on August tenth. And the applicant refers to the comments that, that remain on there. And the, the main difference between the two, the supplement includes some comments related to those driveway improvements for Blue Bell Avenue. And the ones that are asked for them to address include providing a, a sequence of the traffic control for when they do these improvements to ensure that those other homes have continued access to and from their homes. Uh, it is the only access for, for their homes. With no other streets coming in, uh, for, for their, uh, their way to get to and from their house. Uh, and then also, uh, there's a, a retaining wall that's, that's shown, not, not a very large one, but one that does require some further detail. And they mentioned the Fire Marshal's letter. Uh, we just have them provide that, that approval. Since they've addressed their request, uh, for the dimensions and, and kind of layout of the road. So I just wanted to mention that those additional comments, since it wasn't seen to be included for, for tonight's packet. Uh, and other than that, the, the applicants have worked with us to, uh, address many of the other comments, the few that remained, uh, seem to be acceptable as well comply to finalize the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Do any, um, other board members have questions for either Mr. Kessler, Mr. McGuigan, Mr. Dumac, or the applicant, Mr. Barner? Yes, Mr. Tosti.
Yeah, I, I would like to, um, touch on number five too. Because if you're going to do the widening of the road, like you said, you're going to, you're going to expand it anyway. Why would you need the waiver, uh, to not require it then if you're going to do?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Dumac, please.
Well, it, it, the, uh, it, it's straightforward. What the Fire Marshal's requesting of us at a minimum is a twenty-foot wide, uh, driveway width. The township standard for road widening or for, for a, uh, proposed cartway for a road is twenty-six foot wide with a considerable asphalt cross-section, curbs, sidewalks. That, the entire schmear. What we're proposing, since there's only two homes, including this, this proposed lot to service or access through this widened driveway is simply to do a twenty-foot wide stone or gravel. Double wide driveway for the two units. Instead of the full, uh, cross-section required as per your township ordinance.
So with the widening that you're doing at twenty foot, um, coming down Cedar Avenue off of Maple.
Yep.
Will a fire truck be able to make that turn into that paper road where that car or where the house is or the new lot will be? Will that be able to accommodate that then?
Yes, uh, there was an issue with, uh, the neighbor. I believe it was either last winter or the winter before that. The existing driveway that services his own, his own home is only about eight to nine feet wide. The, the fire truck, uh, drove off the driveway path and got stuck. So by going to a twenty-foot wide stone driveway. It gives us the width not only for the fire truck, but to actually allow two cars to pass each other, um, as needed. So, uh, it's a benefit to both the, uh, emergency services as well as the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, I, I just, I know that area and actually I, I know during that last storm, there was a lot of trees down there on that paper street, that, that blocked the paper street. And it, it's concerning if you're coming off of Maple Avenue, if a vehicle would be able to make that right turn up that, that paper street there.
I know there's been a lot of concern on our end, uh, with respect to tree removal. So we do want to make sure that any trees that are potentially, uh, an issue are taken down prior to the widening itself.
And then the other question I got is, um, the agreement that the neighbor will not, I guess, come together with you on this. Is there, uh, there? I, let's say, do they not want this, this project there, the neighbor from Blue Bell? Is that, is that, is it just something?
I, 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 I can't, uh, speculate on that.
Okay.
Considering I was the one who subdivided, or my father, sorry. My father was the guy who, uh, subdivided the lot for Mr. Adele back in the late eighties, early nineties.
Perfect.
Tom, just to give you some background, the, the neighbor, um, Mr. Adele, who we mentioned, was at the, did attend the planning commission meetings, uh, via Zoom. Um, and he did, he was opposing the, uh,
Oh, okay, alright.
Alright. And just to clarify, I mean, we've tried to address the neighbors' concerns at, at planning commission as Mr. Esposito, um, mentioned. Especially regarding the, the driveway. And that's one of the reasons why we decided to widen it and regrade and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I will say, I have spoken with, uh, Mr. McGuigan's colleague, Mr. McGuinness, a few different times. And he has actually forwarded to me the, the draft of the maintenance easement agreement that they forwarded over to Mr. Adele. So I have seen that they have tried, uh, to, to work with the neighbor on it.
And the only reason I ask is, I mean, there's letters in here from neighbors on Cedar Avenue. Who are in favor of this, but there was none like from the one on Blue Bell. That's why I was asking that question.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. Um, and thank you, Mr. Esposito, for jumping in. Are there any, uh, other board questions? Not seeing any. Um, I can certainly accept the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Strauss.
No, I was going to ask Mr. Kessler, it sounded like he wanted to be sure we included something else specific in the conditions. Cause this will be, um, a conditional motion. Uh, can you help me with the phrasing of that if I heard that right?
Yes, thanks, Ms. uh, Ms. Strauss. What I was looking for, I guess, related to that fifth waiver request, uh, was just to make sure that it didn't waive their planned, uh, improvements with, uh, the paper street with Blue Bell Avenue. So I, I would say that with that waiver request they have before the board tonight. Any kind of, um, motion would have a condition that, uh, as Mr. Dumac mentioned, the, the widening, the, the layout of twenty-foot wide doesn't quite meet the, the full wi- widening of a, of a township road that we would see, but the, the real intent of the widening of that paper street uh, is so that the emergency vehicles, the fire trucks, ambulance, uh, type of response can, can be safely accessed back there. So the, the final approval of the Fire Marshal, uh, would definitely be something I would recommend uh, as being received before, um, the final plan review, uh, approval that we will ask, uh, to see on their revised plans. Uh, so the, the final approval by the Fire Marshal as well as, uh, any, um, uh, comments they had for the safe, uh, layout of that road, uh, would be something to include with, with any motion tonight.
Okay, okay. And I do think I see that in the second condition here. So, Mr. Esposito, if you think that that suffices, then it sounds like I am ready to make this motion. You're on mute. Sorry.
Sorry, I was just trying to read the second condition as you were.
I was giving you a minute, no problem.
He was reading on mute.
That looks good, that second condition there to, to address the, uh, Fire Marshal's comments to widening the road.
Okay, great. Uh, so I will make a motion to grant final minor subdivision and land development approval for Barnard three sixty-four Cedar Avenue S L D thirteen dash five with the following conditions. One, applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance. Unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Two, final approval by the Fire Marshal shall be provided for the improvements to Blue Bell Avenue and revised plans to be submitted, addressing any and all outstanding review letter comments. Three, confirmatory deeds shall be recorded at the time of plan recordation, confirming the new legal descriptions for lots one and two. The deeds shall be in a form acceptable to the township solicitor prior to recording with the Bucks County Recorder of Deeds.
Second. There's been a motion on a second. Are there any other, uh, board questions at this time? Are there any questions from the public? Not seeing any. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Carries five zero. Congratulations, Mr. Barner. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good night, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, uh, and next on the agenda is consideration of the preliminary final land development plan for the Oxford Valley multifamily redevelopment for C R P slash C T Oxford Valley Owner LLC, twenty-three hundred Lincoln Highway, Langhorne, Pennsylvania. And I see we have, let's see, Mr. Tracy, Mr. Delaporta. Looks like we have Mr. Murphy. Um, who would like to go first on behalf of the applicant?
Probably I would, and it looks like somebody's not letting my video kick in, but.
Can we get Mr. Murphy's video to work?
Great, thanks. I'll start. Uh, I'm here with, uh, both, uh, Dave Delaporta and, uh, Don Tracy, his partner, to present the plans for the land development portion of the project that the Board of Supervisors reviewed last fall when you entertained and granted some zoning relief to enable this, uh, multifamily residential housing component of the redevelopment of the mall to move ahead. Where we are procedurally tonight is that, following the approval of the rezoning, uh, land development plans were submitted. Back in February, uh, the plan started to be reviewed. Then we had the shutdown and it took a while. Once everybody got up and running thereafter to complete those reviews. Since then, we've submitted revised plans to your boards and consultants, including Isaac and Phil. And others, and we've now gotten a, uh, subsequent round of review letters. Most recently, we have a review letter of July twenty from Phil's, uh, office and a July twenty-nine letter from Isaac's office. Those plans were both reviewed by your planning commission in early August, which resulted in a favorable recommendation, and that's why we're here this evening. But before we touch about, uh, those reviews, I think, uh, what we'd like to do, because it's been a while since you've seen it, is to have David sort of walk through with the board, the sketch plans that you saw and which gave rise to the rezoning effort last fall. Uh, so perhaps Dave can do that and then we'll circle back with, uh, where we are following the planning commission recommendation. Dave, you want to pick up?
Yeah, thank you.
Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Yep.
So, good evening. Yes, I'll just run through the presentation that we showed you last year for the zoning and we've just, it's essentially the exact same plan with just some tweaks as we've gone through the, done detailed engineering. But here you can see the entire mall property, which is approximately a hundred and thirty-five acres. And you can see the creation of the new residential, uh, component on the south side that's on a approximately twenty acres. We have our two buildings, uh, separated by the extension of, uh, Fourth Street. And this is just a close-up, uh, of the site plan. Showing you the, uh, the two buildings and the addition. So, the, the site currently, um, is mostly a vac- uh, the parking lot and the vacant Boscovs. A portion of the Boscovs is being demolished. And we're creating the, the two buildings, um, adding eight acres of open space. And you can see the, each of the buildings has its own, um, parking garage, structured parking garage, takes care of all the parking for the residential. Each community, each building has extensive outdoor amenities. Uh, you can see pools and the green areas. Uh, and the addition of this central green, uh, between the mall and the residential to create a, a nice focal point that would be, uh, open to the public and, and serve as a, a nice connection between the mall and the, uh, the residential.
Talk about the sidewalk interconnection issue. That's been the subject of a lot of planning and conversation.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so we're adding almost a mile of sidewalk. Surrounding, uh, the property on the perimeter and connecting to the mall. Connecting the intersection here, as you can see, and all, all around the perimeter, around Middletown Boulevard. Try and really promote pedestrian bike vehicular connectivity, uh, between the mall and the residential. And then just, uh, some renderings of the conceptual architecture of the buildings. They are, um, modern four-story, uh, new apartment buildings, elevator serviced, enclosed corridors. Uh, as I said, extensive outdoor and indoor amenities. The pool, fitness center, business center. We have full-time management, uh, uh, and maintenance staff on site to take care of everything inside and out. This is, uh, coming along on that road. Separating the, the mall on the right-hand side from the apartments. This is the first building. This is the second building in the background. And this is that central, uh, green, uh, you know, that we envision being a, a nice buffer, but connection, um, between the, the two uses. And then further going around, just to give you a sense, this is Middletown Boulevard. And, you know, a sense of the, the architecture, you know, most of the units would have balconies, these would be nine-foot ceilings. Open plans, um, you know, and, and heavily landscaped, um, you know, intended to be a, uh, a first-rate new, uh, modern apartment community. You know, we, we mentioned, uh, to you during the zoning that we had done, you know, a number of studies. The project will have a very positive fiscal impact to both the township, uh, and the school district. We've spent, you know, quite a bit of time working with all of your consultants and professionals. You know, numerous meetings and we believe at this point that we, we have satisfied all of their, their requests. We have a, a couple of will comply items left on the, on the review letters. But, um, we're, we're ready to move ahead. We're, we need to get our couple of final permits and, and we're ready to move. So that's really the, the summary. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I had mentioned, uh, before David started that we had gotten the second round of review comments from your various consultants. When we were at the planning commission in early August, uh, we mentioned then, as we would tonight, that the most recent review from, from Isaac's office dated July twenty-nine is all, uh, will comply type items. And the only waiver that was being sought was to permit the submission of the plans as a combined the submission of the plans as a combined preliminary as final document. And I think hopefully Isaac would confirm that the level of detail that is otherwise required for a final plan submission is exists with regard to this set of plans. And similarly, we spent a fair amount of time with Phil's office talking about traffic and traffic-related matters, and I think the board's been up been brought up to speed on what Simon is doing from a mall perspective as opposed to what David and Don are doing with regard to their apartment component. But Phil issued a detailed letter on July 20 that we have provided a a response dated July 27, which I presume is, or we're both in your packets. But once again, as we said at the planning commission, the items that Phil wanted to highlight, including, you know, pedestrian connectivity, integration and coordination of the signals, et cetera. I think they're all will comply items, but I'll defer to both Isaac and Phil if they want to talk about any items. Specifically, they want us to address or highlight from their point of view, but we're all will comply and once we get our other outside agency permits and approvals, we're ready to get started.
Mr. Delaporta, can you just unshare your screen, please? So we can all see each other again. Thank you. Before I, I'll I'll let Mr. Kessler, I'll let you comment. Before you do, though, Mr. Tracy, anything additional to add, or Mr. Delaporta, anything additional to add?
Yeah, not for me. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Castle, your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kiechek. I I agree with the with the applicant's understanding of the the comments that remain here with our review letter. I give the applicant a lot of credit for working with us and and the consultants during our reviews. The the comments that remain are really just for some clarifications and connections with mostly those open space courtyard areas, which I know we're we're a little kind of lagging in in the design as far as the overall site was concerned. So with a little more detail with that now, it's expected that that's that will comply shouldn't be an issue on their part. And I'll I'll mention as well, because I mentioned that in our discussions at the planning commission meetings, and it came up for discussion, is that the the proposed work and layout that they have here, the items that were really brought to the forefront in the presentation really hit on a lot of the items for the comprehensive plan objectives that we had talked about. You know, over the course of of that plan being put together, and I know we adopted it earlier this evening. The connectivity goals that we have, the the multi-use of some properties that, you know, have have kind of gone past their 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 lifespan. And and really integrating some pedestrian connective measures to to connect some communities, the Fourth Street to Woodburn. You know, focus of of this project, the way it's situated. Really, I I think complements the main goals that that we have with that comprehensive plan. So I I wanted to mention that tonight just because we did talk about it at the planning commission meetings. And if if they wanted to add anything to that, I I'd turn it back to them. But otherwise, our review letter, we have, we have no issue with understanding the comply with the remaining few items.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Mr. Worster, since traffic was referenced and you were involved, would you like to provide any input or comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo some of Isaac's comments regarding the pedestrian connectivity. They've done a great job with that. They've been a real pleasure to work with with regard to, we we had some extensive comments and some some big concerns that they really hit a home run with from from our perspective. Couple of highlights would be the signal interconnection between the intersection at Woodburn Road and the interior mall signal at Middletown Boulevard and Fourth Street. They are going to provide a shuttle service from the from the complex to the Woodburn Train Station, which is, again, that's that's a tremendous amenity for the for the the whole community to be able to get people, you know, from this area, the mall included. They're going to work with the TMA Bucks to come up with some sort of strategy that the whole mall can use that shuttle service in some fashion. We're excited to work with them on that as that develops. And the bigger thing is that what they've done allows us to easily coordinate with the future development of the mall. So i- it's really a great first step. We're very excited for the township and for the developer to get moving on this thing. It's nice.
Thank you, Mr. Worster. Do any board members at this time have any questions for Mr. Worster, Mr. Kessler, and Mr. Tracy, Mr. Delaporta, or Mr. Murphy? And if not, certainly we can entertain a motion anytime anyone's ready. Mr. Tasty.
I make a motion to grant preliminary and final land development approval for Oxford Valley Multifamily Redevelopment, CRP/CT Oxford Valley Owner LLC 2300 Lincoln Highway, S-LD number 20-68.
I'll second. There's, well, we got a lot of seconds. Everybody says, there's been a motion on a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Okay, are there any questions or comments from the public? Looks like we have a couple. The first is, we have Paula Kearns. So if we could just have her brought into the meeting. Ms. Kearns, when you get in, if you could just, you can turn your video monitor on if you want, although you don't have to. And then if you could just state your name and address, please. And you are, you're still muted if you're trying to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
This is Tom Kearns. First thing I want to say is I want to say hello to Ed Murphy. I I haven't seen that curmudgeon in many, many years. It's good to see.
I still can't see you, thank God, but I hear you.
Yeah, well, you got a lot of nerve. It's good to see you.
My God, what happened?
Good to see you again, Ed. You guys made a motion, I think, before you allowed people have the right to weigh in on it. I I don't think it, it's kind of a big development. I don't think it should be lumped together as preliminary final. I think you should allow preliminary and give people an opportunity, more people an opportunity to comment on it before it goes to final. That's item number one. Number two is is, has there been a change made to the way Fourth Street interacts with Woodburn Road in that most of the way people can go in there, they can do a rolling, they they can roll through the, most of them roll through the red light. They don't, they don't stop there. And it's really kind of dangerous to cross that road from the other side. The other side's where the sidewalks are. And years, a couple of years ago, Middletown was going to put in, they're going to get a grant to make a nice sidewalk all the way down to the train station. And that didn't happen. So it would be nice if in some way that sidewalk could be enhanced to get people who want to go from the apartments and from the mall down to the train station. A lot of people will probably take that train, I would think, from the apartments. The rolling intersection there, that needs to be fixed somehow so that people just can't roll through the red lights, which they do all the time. So they don't even look to see if a pedestrian's walking across the street. You have to be very careful walking across the street there. The next thing is the intersection where it was never done properly when the mall was put in, where Route 1, you can enter from Route 1. That should really be two lanes going into the mall. And it should be two lanes coming out of the mall, and it shouldn't just be a right turn only. And it should be the same way for the Target, the Target Center across the street. They should have two lanes going out, two lanes coming in. And it should be like a T or a a cross-section, a crosswalk there. So that somehow needs to be addressed. I know I I remember when I was on the board, we used to be able to get some money from developers to fix things that were considered, quote, off-site. I don't know whether this is considered off-site or not. But that intersection needs to be fixed. The other intersection that needs to be fixed is down where Route 1 intersects with Oxford Valley Road. There really needs to be two lanes turning left there. Now, the the only reason I mentioned all this stuff is because this development is going to have an impact on that. And those things need to be addressed. And if this development is built without any of that stuff being somehow addressed in this whole thing, I think is a is a is a major flaw that the board really needs to take a look at. So, I mean, there's other things too, but that's basically the things that I wanted to mention. And it just seems to me that you ought to just pull it out preliminary and final from final and give people more of an opportunity to at least think about this and have a say before it goes to final. So that's my comments. Sorry, Ed.
No problem, Tom. Always good to hear from you.
Thanks, Tom. Certainly appreciate your comments. I might, Mr. Worster, since I know some of these are traffic-related concerns, and I think you might be able to provide some information on some of those issues. Do you just want to try to comment or answer some of Mr. Kearns' concerns?
Sure, I'm very happy to, and I'm happy to say that I pretty much have an answer for each one of those, and I appreciate Mr. Kearns bringing those up. The first one is, as I mentioned before, applicants can provide a shuttle for these, the people that live in these apartments to be able to use the train station. As everyone knows, we've had a difficult time putting in sidewalk because of the amount of private property that's involved there. So it it's still something that we certainly would like to see at some point. But again, you know, we're dealing with people's front yards and so forth. So this is a way to kind of get this done right away. And again, it's a, it's it's a tremendous effort that to be able to get from the train station right now to the mall, and we're going to make that much easier with this development. The inters, the signals will be interconnected and modernized between Fourth Street at Woodburn and Fourth Street at Middletown Boulevard. So that will, that should take care of of the, I guess, I suppose, the rolling stop and so forth, to be able to add a little bit more of a a modern infrastructure to those traffic signals. Regarding the mall development and Route 1, that intersection, as well as the Oxford Valley Road intersection and what is happening with Target, we're on top of with regard to the plans associated with 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 what Target is trying to do and what the mall is eventually going to do. And those are, those are three intersections that will be adjusted based upon the mall development. It's simply not reasonable to to apply all these improvements to just the apartment complex. It's a much bigger issue when it comes to the mall, and we've had preliminary discussions with Simon with regard to their plans associated with this. They know what we're asking for, and we've got nothing but a positive responses for it all. So all those intersections, we feel, are going to be taken care of in the way Mr. Kearns has has spoken for.
Thank you, Mr. Worster. I appreciate that. Looks like we do have another member of the public. It's Mr. Kara Squillo again. So if we could let him back in. Yep, go ahead, sir. You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I have to agree with Paula Kearns, Paul or Paula. I just saw the name. The concern I also have, which I don't think was mentioned on the impact study, the traffic study, is school buses. When they're in season, Woodburn Road becomes a nightmare. Are buses going to be allowed to stop on Woodburn Road to let students off, or is there designated parking for school buses in the entrance of the property building inside the mall?
Anyone have an answer? Mr. Worster, you have any any knowledge about the school bus issue?
No, I don't, but that's a a great question, and we certainly will will try to address that with the with the property owner regarding what the school district has intentions of. That's something that's kind of out of our purview as far as the the way the school buses operate and so forth. But I I believe that there's plenty of room. I mean, if they stop on Woodburn Road now, they probably will continue to stop on Woodburn Road. But inside the mall, that's that's a good question. I don't I don't know the answer to that with regard to the property owners' expectations of their residents and so forth, but that would have to be addressed.
Is there room on Woodburn and Fourth Street to make a right-turn lane to alleviate some of that backup? Because if now you have, the buses stop on Fourth and Woodburn to let passengers get off to go to Fourth Street where there's properties there. But once you have that high-rise four-story building there, there's going to be students, a lot more students in that bus that will be getting off that's going to delay traffic even further. Can you, can you do an impact study to see if a right-turn lane for Fourth Street can alleviate some of that backup?
Well, generally, if it's just the school buses, that wouldn't be the the cause for for that backup. We could certainly talk to the school district about that. I would imagine that we would have pedestrian access, and that mean schoolchildren walking on the sidewalk to Fourth and 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 Woodburn right now. But again, I can't answer for the school district with regard to how they're going to operate that. But again, a good question, and and we certainly will respond to that from the from the township's perspective on how that could all work and make it work as as good as we can.
So there was.
Okay, let me just see if there are any additional public comments. I'm not seeing any. You know, I'll just, I'll just note, you know, Mr. Kearns, you know, mentioned the the idea of giving the public more time to be involved and provide input. You know, personally, and and anybody else who wants to comment, feel free. But this is, this is something that has been involved in a number of meetings at a number of different levels. This is the second time it's been before us. Obviously, it's been before the planning commission. There have been numerous meetings involved with involving township staff, township engineers, traffic engineers, solicitor, and you know, the applicant has made a number of changes based on feedback that has come in from the various levels. So I just, if I could, I'd like to, to some degree, refute the suggestion that the public hasn't been given an opportunity to be involved in this process. It's been a long process, and there've been numerous opportunities for the public to be involved, and they have been involved. And I think it's to the applicant's credit that they've made a lot of changes to their plan to try to address some of the concerns. At this point, I am not seeing any other public comment.
One hand raised.
Okay. Give me one second. Yes, Mr. Kearns again. We'll get you back in here. Yep, go ahead.
Tom, you're muted.
Okay.
Yep.
The preliminary final, I don't know, you know, it's been a while since I've been on the board. It's been quite a while, actually. But we always did things preliminary, and then we did a final. Now, I don't know whether or not there's been a new effort to combine them together, and that's the way you guys do business. I don't know that, but it it's, it's always been traditional that, you know, developments came in, they were given preliminary approval. And then changes were made after preliminary approval, and then you went to final. So that when you had, in other words, this meeting should be a preliminary approval. People have the right to comment. And those comments get thought about, they get addressed, and then you come back for final. Now, you know, you guys go ahead and do preliminary final if that's the new way of doing things, but that was never the way of doing things. And maybe if it's some little tiny development that has no impact, you know, that's one thing. But to combine preliminary and final together, I just think it's the wrong thing to do. So that's all.
Hey, Tom, can I comment on that? Tom?
Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Tom, back when we were all doing this a while back, you're right, it used to be more common that you would do a preliminary plan and then you would do a final plan. As time has gone on, though, what's been happening is applicants have risked the choice of doing preliminary final together, which Isaac will tell you involves a lot more detail in the planning and design of the plans than they and design of the plans than they would at preliminary. So most applicants today, you take the risk of engineering it to the, to the degree required by the ordinance to qualify as a final plan and hope that we get approval, but it's the applicant's risk. So what I said earlier, I think is accurate, that our plans today represent in terms of the level of detail, the plans that would otherwise qualify for final plan approval, not just preliminary. So it's our risk, we do it, and we hope that we've satisfied that higher bar. And I think Isaac's review letter confirms that we have done it. So that's, that's, if there's been any change over time, that's the change. Is the willingness of the applicant to provide a greater level of detail earlier in the, in the process than later. So.
If I could just, if I could just add one other point that's unique here is that in this case, we really almost went through the preliminary process in the zoning process. We did extensive plans to, in, in order to, uh, go through the zoning process with you and, and did have many public meetings and other meetings on that, showing the same plans that you saw tonight. Didn't have the engineering detail, but it was almost to the level of the way we used to do preliminaries as Ed is describing. So this case is a little bit unique in that we, we kind of went through that process during the zoning process.
Well, I, and I just want to clarify, and maybe Mr. Kessler or Mr. Esposito, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the choice to combine preliminary and final is the applicant's decision, and they bear the risk of not going through the preliminary, uh, phase, which I think is what Mr. Murphy was saying. It's not, it's not a, um, a directive that comes from the board of supervisors that we're, we're telling them to do it that way.
All right. Well, the, the, the last comment that I'll make then is just, it seems to me then, if that's the way things go, that the public has to know to get more involved in, early in the planning, the planning stage of it, when they go to the planning board.
Okay. I mean, fair enough. I mean, I, you know, I, I can't speak for the planning commission, but certainly that meeting was duly advertised, and it was a public meeting. And so, I mean, I'm, I can't, I can't speak exactly to what the level of participation was or wasn't at that meeting. But again, there's been multiple meetings over roughly a year, um, and all of them have been duly advertised, and the public have had opportunity to comment. And those comments have been considered, um, extensively by the board and I think by the applicant.
I'm not disagreeing.
Okay, understood. That's certainly your right to do that. Um, I don't see any other, uh, public comments. So at this point, there's been a motion and a second.
I would like to request that we follow up with Mr. Kara Squillo, because we did cut him off by accident. Uh, Mr. Kara Squillo, if you would like to follow up again, could you please raise your hand? You should be cleared to proceed.
Okay. All right, uh, let's try it again. There's been a motion and a second. Um, we've gone through board questions and public questions. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Pass is five zero. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Yep. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I believe that, um, brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any, uh, public comment on non-agenda items? Yes, Mr. Kara Squillo. You just need to unmute yourself.
In the news, you had advertised about the PHR, and you asked applicants to send those applications in and that it would be covered in tonight's meeting. However, it wasn't in the agenda. Is that something that is going to move forward or, or not?
Um, yes, it is. Um, we just, it's, it's not going forward at this meeting just because there were some more, um, and Mr. Esposito, maybe you want to talk about specifically what needed to be done in order to finalize that. So it probably will be ready to be voted on at the next meeting. Is that right, Mr. Esposito?
Yes, it should, it should be. We actually were contacted by the, by the chair of the, uh, of the State's Commission, just to give us a few recommendations of what they, they saw. So we were, uh, changing a couple, uh, a couple minor, minor things, uh, but it should be ready to go for the next.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Um, any other, uh, public comment on non-agenda items? Not seeing any, so we will move on to, uh, the final item of tonight, which is other business. I'll start with Ms. Payne.
Uh, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal.
I just wanted to, again, um, uh, wish Nancy and Ruth, um, happy retirement, thank them for their service, Middletown Township, and I hope they have many, many years of, uh, happy peaceful retirement. And I also wanted to thank the, um, board that, on the, um, sorry, the planning commission and the citizens that worked on the board. Um, I think they did a really nice job coming up with a plan. I know they put many hours into it, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I won't repeat the congratulations of Ms. Corporal, although I certainly echo them, and we did read those, uh, participating members of the public by name at the last meeting. So just thank, do thank them again. Uh, but I did have a couple of, um, congratulatory notes of my own that I wanted to share. One is, uh, I just wanted to say, um, without a lot of reflection, that I loved being able to see and hear from our residents in this meeting again. So to everyone who behind the scenes worked to figure out this new Zoom format, where we were able to actually bring residents into the meeting, thank you. It feels like one more step towards normal life, and even when residents disagree with us, I like hearing from them as opposed to, uh, Mr. Kezak's, uh, able, but not quite, uh, acting Oscar-level impersonations of them. So thank you for doing this. I know it can't have been easy from a technical perspective.
If I could congratulate Chad McGee, Lisa Burkus, and Nick Valla, as well as David from Foster Digital. They did the work behind the scenes. And Chad reminded me today that this was the, um, this was the platform he wanted to use from the beginning. Kudos to Chad.
Okay, we'll never ignore you again, Chad. Thank you. Um, no, seriously, I appreciate it. And then my other, um, note of appreciation is to our professionals. Mr. Esposito certainly, but also definitely Mr. Kessler and Mr. Worster, who I think did a fabulous job holding, uh, our developers to account on the public comments that we received on the mall development plan. Uh, I saw so many changes in this plan that were a direct result from the dozens of comments that we received over the past year, particularly of a memorable in-person meeting where, uh, Cornerstone Tracy unveiled their initial plan. I, I think this has come so far and is so exciting, and I know that a lot of that is, again, behind the scenes work by the experts, the engineers, the lawyers, uh, that really understand how to, uh, pull everything together for the township and make sure that this major development works for, uh, everyone. So I hope Mr. Kearns and his neighbors can trust us that we are building in as much as we can in terms of walkability, traffic responsiveness, and that this is going to be a real net positive for the township, uh, and I can see the change every single time we see this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Mr. Tasty.
I echo, I echo them comments. They were actually very good comments, and I'm totally, totally in agreement with them. Uh, the only comment I would like to make is, uh, just to remind our residents that the census is not over, and if you haven't filled it out, please fill it out. Uh, it's funding that comes back to not only our municipalities, but also our state. So, uh, there are, there are, uh, significant amount of people that haven't filled it out, so please remember to fill them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tasty. Uh, Mr. Esposito.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
No further comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Teoli Cools.
I have nothing. Thank you.
And I have nothing either, although I did, um, I apologize. We did get an email, uh, comment from a resident that I missed, um, during the, um, public comment on non-agenda items. Um, so I'm going to read that quickly. This is from Sheldon Post of Red Rose Gate, and he asks, "I'm wondering if we can have an update on phase two of the new section signage around the township, realizing that COVID-19 has most likely had an effect. I don't believe I've seen any of the phase two signs go up at this point. Even if I have missed some movement on this, I would still appreciate an update, an update on where we stand." Um, can we just do a quick update on where that stands? Cause truthfully, I can't remember. Go ahead, Mr. Valla.
Everybody, um, so phase two of the neighborhood sign program was recommended for a one-year postponement in an effort to, uh, curb costs for the capital plan, uh, in 2020. Um, and we are expecting that to be, um, going forward next year in 2021. Um, and phase two includes about 50 or so section signs for neighborhoods that have been previously unmarked. Um, I know there's also a handful of entrances, I believe for Cynthia Gate in particular, and maybe one in Highland Park, um, that had signs that were previously put up by the community foundation that will also be replaced. And I know that we've received several comments from residents of the Georgetown Development, um, and we do have plans to include them in phase two as well.
There you go, Mr. Post. Um, thank you, Mr. Valla. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Anyone? Mr. Tasty.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Or man.
Somebody got it. Uh, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.